Welcome to the Tupelo Regular City Council Meeting for November 4th, 2025. Welcome to those in the audience and those that are joining us online. We will start out with an invocation by myself and the Pledge of Allegiance by Bentley Nolan. Let us stand. Lord, we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Tupelo. Help us to make wise decisions that will enable us to be a reflection of the city you desire us to be. Help us to strive, help us strive to do what is right in your eyes at all times. In Christ's name, amen.
Face is white. Attention, soldier. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, let's start with a confirmation or amendment to the agenda and agenda order. Vice President, Ryan?
I'm going to make a motion that we make item fifteen, item fourteen, and that is in the matter of the subdivision, major subdivision application twenty-five dash oh one and preliminary plan approval for Congro Phase Three. So that is item fifteen on the current agenda, and it will become item fourteen. And then make the current item fourteen, number fifteen, which is in the matter of review and approve rezoning application, RZ twenty-five oh one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. We're going to go to Proclamations, Recognizations, and Reports Agenda. In the matter of proclamation recognizing the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the U.S. Postal Service.
Yes, I will ask Ms. Jennifer Tudor to come up with the postal service, and I will read the proclamation. It is rather long, so bear with me. Whereas, the United States Postal Service has played a significant role in the historical development of the United States of America and a vital part of the fabric binding together the people of this country. And whereas, the universal service obligation, which enables the population to receive equal and affordable services no matter who we are or where we live, is a democratic right of the people. And whereas, the United, U.S. Postal Service serves a hundred-and-sixty-nine million addresses, six and sometimes seven days a week. And whereas, the U.S. Postal Service does not receive taxpayers' money, but rather runs on its own revenue created by postal and postal products. And whereas, due to its public mission, the U.S. Postal Service is a low-cost anchor of the $1.3 trillion mailing and package industry which supports seven million jobs across the country. And whereas, the U.S. Postal Service is an important source of good union, living wage jobs with fair hiring practices and equal pay for, equal work for workers for all walks of life, and is one of the largest employers of veterans. And whereas, the city of Tupelo recognizes the importance of the universal service mandate, the public mission of the U.S. Postal Service, and recognizes the efforts of the hundreds of thousands of public servants who work daily to fulfill that mission. And whereas, while communication habits are always changing, the U.S. Postal Service remains a vital source of communications, the exchange of ideas, financial transactions, private and secure correspondence, mail-order medications, mail-in voting, and e-commerce packages, and a host of opportunities for new and expanded services. And whereas, the U.S. Postal Service is owned by the people and is a wonderful national treasure encapsulating the best of government of, by, and for the people. And whereas, the U.S. Postal Service shall be operated as a basic and fundamental service provided by the people, by the government of the United States authorized by the Constitution, created by act of Congress and supported by the people. Now therefore, I, Todd Jordan, Mayor of the city of Tupelo, Mississippi, do hereby honor and recognize the two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary of the U.S. Postal Service.
I would like to thank Mayor Jordan and the residents of Tupelo for the honoring of the United States Postal Service of its two-hundred-and-fifty years of service to this great nation. We would like to present Mayor Jordan with a book of stamps that the postal service created showing the two-hundred-and-fifty years. We would like for each and every one of y'all to visit your post office to get the same book of stamps for themselves.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any girl or boy scouts with us tonight? No, we don't. Employee recognition, do we have any of those?
No.
Public recognition. Uh, let's start with Travis.
I don't have any.
I would like for us to keep, um, Gremlin Hodges Salters, who was an employee of, uh, CDF, uh, family in prayer, uh, they lost her, I think her funeral was, uh, two Saturdays ago. And, uh, she was one of the people who greeted you every time you would go over to the college, over to the, uh, community, the, the CDF office, and was very visible when we would see her over there. So, uh, we'd like to keep, keep her family in prayer.
Okay. Thank you. Um, correct?
Yep, I just wanted to give a shout out to the police, fire department, Public Works, uh, for ensuring that, um, everybody that celebrated Halloween, um, all the festivities that were going around town, uh, did a great job stepping up and, and filling those gaps where needed. So appreciate you guys.
I too want to thank the Tupelo Police Department for always showing up and answering at a time of need. Well, thanks for coming out on Halloween.
Uh, hey, I'm Trina. Friday night at the, um, at the depot.
Chad?
I want to be there.
Well, I just want to say that I finally got to take my granddaughter to the Ballard Park Playground last weekend, and it was wonderful, um, seeing all the kids that were smiling and the parents that were smiling. It was just a great community atmosphere, and every child there was having a great time. I could, it was amazing. So if you hadn't been to look at it, please go over there so you can appreciate it. Uh, the ported place, soft surface, I, I saw a child fall, and I'm telling you that child would have probably been at the emergency room if it hadn't been for that. So that was amazing as well. So I just want to say we got it right. Thank you.
Good deal. All right, uh, let's see, several things, I'll go through these quickly. Uh, parking wreck had a, um, a tournament this weekend that normally would go to Starkville, but they couldn't accommodate it because of the weather, so we got about fifty, sixty teams in. Uh, let's see, Frisbee Football, or Football Frisbee, what is it?
Frisbee Football.
Ultimate Frisbee will be in next weekend, thirty-something teams, and they will, uh, stay in our hotels and, and spend a lot of money. Christmas Parade, I think, December the fifth, I know we got a little time, but it's coming up. Also, parking wreck, uh, along with CVB, won the Mississippi Tennis Association Twenty-Twenty-Five Team Tennis Event of the Year for the Mixed Doubles and Fifty-Five and Over Championships, and they will be going to, uh, Jackson in, into January, getting an award for that. So congratulations, Alex. And, uh, Chief Quaca, we've got another announcement. Come on up.
All right, thank you. Last week, the Tupelo Police Department SWAT team participated in the annual Mississippi-Tennessee Tactical Officers Association Competition. We do it every year. This year, there were twenty-four teams in it from Mississippi and Tennessee. Our team finished overall number two. We're the second-best SWAT team, only behind Shelby County, Tennessee SWAT team, who has a full-time SWAT team, that's all those guys do. Whereas, our officers do other things too. SWAT is a additional collateral duty. So in the past four out of the last five years, we have scored, we have finished second or higher in four of the five years. Two years ago, we actually finished number one and beat Shelby County. So we got a really good team.
And the only, the last thing, happy birthday to our lead counselor, Ben Logan.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, moving forward, let's go down to close of regular meeting, open the public agenda. Uh, now we're going to go to public hearings. In the matter of public hearing for lot naming, do we have anyone here for that? No, we don't. All right, in the matter of public hearing for rezoning application, RZ twenty-five dash oh one, to rezone twelve-point-eight acres between McCullough Boulevard and Pecan Grove Road from MUCC to LDR. Okay, do we have anyone here to speak to that?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, go ahead. You have five minutes, and we'll, we'll start. Tell us when you get to the microphone, sir. Give us your name and your address.
All right. I'm Dr. Max Hutchinson. I'm a retired heart surgeon, uh, live here in Tupelo, live actually on, at sixteen-thirty-two Pecan Grove Drive, which is, uh, in the subdivision adjacent to this property. And, uh, we're proposing to rezone this property because it's a, uh, a piece of property that lends itself very well to residential development. It is not, um, a conducive to commercial development because of the lack of any kind of frontage for commercial use. The only frontage, um, is our actual, our subdivision street, which is in Pecan Grove. So it's a beautiful piece of property, lends itself very well to a, a beautiful, um, residential subdivision, and, uh, we're proposing ten lots that would, would be from three-quarters of an acre to one-point-two acres, uh, to be developed in, on this property.
Okay.
Any questions?
Anything else? Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Who else would like to speak? Just give us your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Counsel. My name is, uh, Dr. Sam Newell. I'm a neurologist who's practiced here in Tupelo for thirty-eight years, and, um, I live at seventeen-ninety-two Pecan Grove Drive. My interest in this matter is that the proposed development is directly across the street from my home. And, uh, so, um, our entire neighborhood is opposed to this development and the access to our street from Pecan Grove. Other than the developer, no one has spoken out in public hearings to, in favor of this access or the development per se. And, uh, preparation for this meeting, my wife sent each of you an email about two weeks ago, which outlined a number of our concerns. And, um, we have discussed these concerns in great detail with the Planning Commission, and we appreciate their indulgence in that matter, in hearing us out. Uh, those concerns include drainage issues that may arise from this development in a neighborhood that's already challenged by inadequate drainage, uh, privacy issues that, um, arise because of existing homes, uh, adjacent to the development, especially, uh, with, uh, tree removal and perhaps inadequate buffers to those, uh, those existing homes. The traffic increase that may result as a result of, um, access, uh, to our street from this development, um, especially, uh, housing construction. Many of us who, uh, built or bought on this, this, uh, street in particular did so because of limited access, because it is a cul-de-sac. Uh, the, uh, we're concerned about the access to our street from this, uh, development because there is another access to, um, Mount Vernon Road that is available. The developer has, um, construction access via this route temporarily for construction of the, um, development, and, uh, a prior development plan had been developed by a different developer that was larger than this one and, um, uh, used this access to Mount Vernon Road, and none of our neighborhoods, neighborhood expressed concern about that. Also, there's been disregard for, uh, city codes and ordinances in regard to construction already on the site and tree removal. Uh, the Planning Commission has assured us that there are consequences, and we are particularly concerned about, uh, the tree removal and replacement of the trees that were, um, taken down, uh, in order to provide adequate buffer to the, uh, existing homes. So in summary, our neighborhood is opposed to this development and access to our street from, directly from our street to this development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Melinda Ivy McElroy, and I live at eighteen-thirty-eight Pecan Grove. I'm the nearest neighbor to the Newels coming in to the entrance on the left, and everyone has a story as to why they live on Pecan Grove, and briefly, this is mine. I moved to this street because I was escaping neighborhood construction. I lived in a neighborhood, um, it's Sweetwater Neighborhood in South Tillo, and there were still, uh, some twenty-five homes to be developed. Our road stayed in total disrepair, there was constant noise, and, um, continually you had an excess amount of just plain old dirt in your house. And I paid a premium price, um, to live on Pecan Grove, and I think part of that price was because it is a cul-de-sac. And all this was an attempt to escape the construction situation, and of course, there were other reasons why that particular location was perfect for me. Uh, it placed me between my husband and dad, it placed me between my two sibling sisters, and closer to my brother in Shannon. But I'd say the next ten years of my life at sixty-seven are probably the most important years of my life to come, and it will most likely be ten years before this development is completed. Building a custom house, which I've done myself in the past, particularly on a two-acre lot, and preparing a raw lawn will not be quickly done. And this translates to us into cement trucks, dirt trucks, brick delivery, truck tractors, and all the needed types of vehicles that will be traveling down our road. And once the easement for maintenance, for a maintenance road on Mount Vernal, Vernon Chapel Road has been, um, no longer exists, then all of these vehicles will be traveling down our road. Most people will say, well, it's only ten houses. Well, ten custom houses on two-acre or so lots can be an excessive, take an excessive amount of time. Between my house and the entrance, there are ten children that make their permanent homes, and most of these children, because we don't have sidewalks, and there's also a drainage problem on the north side of the street in our backyards, that for my neighbor is so severe that a drainage expert suggested he place artificial turf in his backyard. So there are many reasons why these children must play and, and use our street for their bikes, scooters, et cetera. And all of this is just to explain why we need to keep our streets safe and protect all the children that currently live on Pecan Grove. I appreciate that there must be progress, and we just want the new area should be allowed to be developed. The harm occurs to us current homeowners, who are taxpayers for many pieces of property among, along the town, is our quality of life is harmed, when we no longer can enjoy the privilege that we feel that we paid for in order to reside on a cul-de-sac, and because land was purchased by the applicant in addition to what he currently owned, and a roadway other than Pecan Grove could be purchased. Our HOA made an offer to purchase the two lots facing Pecan Grove in order to defray land purchase for this roadway. This was declined. Should the Mount Vernon roadway be purchased, though, the plaque could even be adjusted to accommodate a greater number of homes. This would be to satisfy the, uh, current fire law. It's just a matter of, you know, a developer's wants over two-thirds of our current neighborhood's desires. We're just hoping that you will please give us, who are in the majority, your consideration, and we appreciate your time and your service. Thank you.
I'm Ryan Russell. I reside at nineteen-twelve Pecan Grove. Uh, I've only lived in the neighborhood since March. Um, I'll start by, I moved to the neighborhood because it was a cul-de-sac, and I lived on a very busy street. I've got young children, uh, that love to play in the front yard, ride bikes and everything. I never would have moved if, I never would have moved to this neighborhood or street if I'd have known this development was a possibility. I would have built a house somewhere else or gone to another cul-de-sac. Uh, and like I said, yeah, my wife says we're stuck there now, we're not moving anymore, so I've got to make the best of it. Uh, with my four children, especially my two youngest ones, three and six, we've got a, our backyard slopes like this, we have a lot of rainwater, and it's hard to get in there, so my kids like to play in the front yard, like to play out in the street as far as, you know, supervised playing in the street. We ride bikes, ride, you know, things up and down the streets, scooters. There's already, we were watching last week, construction folks already from the neighborhood that flies up and down the street. You have to watch your kids. If we add ten more houses in there, and they come through our neighborhood, you know, it's going to increase traffic, the speed of construction vehicles that don't, when people don't live in your neighborhood, you don't care as much about speeding or paying attention to other people's kids. Um, and that's what, you know, and then they say, oh, it's two years, three years when the construction traffic's over with. Well, that's not true. You know, if you add ten more houses, there's going to be, you know, two to four people driving cars. You've got Amazon, UPS, FedEx, Walmart, Target, thank goodness, and then, you know, the other places that are delivering, you know, so you could have ten-plus people per house coming in there, so you could easily have, you know, a hundred, two or three hundred people coming in and out of an already narrow, dangerous roadway that you can't turn onto Mount Vernon anyway because of the, uh, monosaver schedule in the morning. So people, people take alternate routes to get out of there. Buying the landlocked portion was obviously well-advised because it comes, you know, it's the only reason it's happened now. I was part of the group that agreed to buy the, um, the portion of the property that Dr. Max owns that would have gave him money to go ahead and proceed and go out to Mount Vernon, like the old water plant did. We agreed on this at a, uh, official homeowners' meeting. Uh, Dr. Max backed out about two weeks before he decided he was going to go back to this other place. So we did have an agreement. We were trying to help defray the cost to go across the ditch to help him go out to Mount Vernon, so there was another option. He chose to only buy the landlocked portion where he would have to go through his route. The trees cut before the permit was, you know, it was still commercial then, so the trees are cut. We're obviously worried about that. The two ditches, the big ditch that already backs up and backs up into Melindish property, backs up into Bow Hills property, and backs up further back, we're worried about all the new dirt and everything coming in there, and then the other ditch that goes into that with the, you know, trees that had been there, had been protective as far as the drainage. Now we've got fresh dirt, a lot less trees, uh, so we're worried about that. Also, we just got a new street about a year and a half, two years ago, that Tupelo taxpayers paid for. After this construction entrance is closed down, these big dump trucks, everything hauling, you know, eighteen-wheelers hauling all the products in are going to tear up this new street that y'all just paid for to get, you know, that, you know, neighborhoods get excited when they get a new street. Uh, also, we want to know if this does pass and this, with the stipulations, what kind of enforcement are we going to have? We're going, you know, if this doesn't, if they don't replant the trees, if they do this, and, you know, if it's outlined in different, what are our options as far as enforcement of, you know, codes and permits that are supposed to be in place, and what do we need to do about that? Also, at the end of the last, um, you know, when we were going through as far as, you know, the permitting, they were talking about, um, at the last meeting, they were telling us at the end, if this is on commercial and that neighborhood is tied in to that, if it does, they were trying to say that, you know, they could tie, if we built this street that a commercial property that's right next door could tie in and be a liquor store, marijuana dispensary, or something like that, that could use the street if it's turned over into be a city street and a tie-in, where they wouldn't like to go out the other way. So being that close to our neighborhood, if that commercial property touches it, that's something that, you know, one of the members of the Planning Commission had said, or either the city engineer had said about that. So obviously, we're a hundred percent opposed to that if it's changing. If we're changing one part, and then the other part's commercial that's touching it, once Tupelo City owns that roadway, it's a public roadway, uh, so we're concerned about that. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tracy May. I live at one-oh-six Major Circle in South Tillo, Mississippi. I'm a consultant for some of the landowners in Pecan Grove. My background is, uh, I used, I designed Big Oaks Golf Course, which is now Tupelo National Golf Club, and I've been in, worked for Jack Nicklaus last, to make it, cut things short real quick, but I've been developing golf courses around the world, several retail developments and commercial developments in the United States with, uh, golf background and all that. But main thing with time is short is there's a process that we need to be. I moved to Tupelo because I love the city. It was so much easier for me to travel around the world. Airport's here, you get in, you get out, and so my compliments to, uh, what the city is doing. But to make it the best city that we can do and what we're going to live in, there's a lot of guidelines that you really need to follow to be the best that we can get. And right now, allowing a development, um, which we've had a stop order on, uh, and understand that, but they started construction on a project, and I rode by there recently. There's no silt fence up, there's still no erosion control, and as you all know, there's permits and requirements that are required for a developer. I'm not opposed to the development if it's another access coming into Pecan Grove. If you have access and they say it's going to be a lot of construction traffic coming in, they're allowing a construction entranceway, well, that's the worst traffic there is, is construction traffic compared to a local residential traffic. But the issue that I see right now is the erosion control, all the permissions and everything, was, nothing was done prior to them starting construction. And as a great city of Tupelo, I would not allow it. Uh, I would do whatever you can, put your foot down, say no until this is rectified, there's nothing that needs to be done. I mean, there's need to be a fine, basically, it's, it should be a bond set up until all this is taken care of, and once everything's plotted out and then, you know, release the bond. But there's issues, you know, I can just go on and on. Y'all know the nationwide four-on-four permits has to be met because it's impacting the stream. If there's at least five cubic feet per second, which moves a leaf in a stream, that's a protected waterway in the United States. Those need to be protected as well, and, you know, there should be gravel on the edge of the road. I mean, I drove down there after it rained the other day, there was somebody that already tracked in there, there was mud on the road, and we got pictures to prove that. There's supposed to be gravel down, but if they follow the permits or what the regulations that is set by the state and the city, there should be a gravel entranceway, and some even go as far as a washdown pit where it has to be washed down for a vehicle to even enter the road. And that's hopefully that's where y'all be in, in a few more years if we're not there for the city, because we're trying to keep everything clean as possible, but, and then you look at all the trees. We talked about in the last meeting, you know, yeah, they're going to replace trees. Where are they going to be planted? You can't plant a tree where the house is, you can't plant it where impervious surface is at, means driveways and streets. So is there a mitigation bank that we plan on using to replace the trees? And what size caliber of trees are going to be replaced? And that's my concern is that the land has been impacted and you just don't do that. I mean, we just can't sit back and allow something to proceed. And I would, that's really what I wanted to address is for the homeowners is that, you know, it's just going to be a muddy mess if something doesn't get taken care of next week. I mean, when it starts raining again? I mean, it's just, it's there and if we allow that to come in or construction traffic even on the side, I mean, it's, it's just, if the land can be used for a construction entrance and they're allowing them to that and there was a possibility for them to sell that piece of property for that, then they may not want to sell it now, but why do we have to lower our standards and let that development happen now? We, we shouldn't have to do that because they're homeowners. I mean, if they have to wait to be able to, someone sells that land, somebody's going to sell it. It's worth some money. If it's a commercial property now, you know, you could put in a commercial residential and put some zoning restrictions on it. But, you know, I just, you know, I've got some photos I'd like to, to give you of what it looks like now and what it was, you know, from the street and stuff. But, you know, it's just, I just really ask y'all to go towards an enforcement of what needs to be done to protect the integrity of the property that's out there right now because it's not being done. Somebody needs to do it and they end up and do it. And I would recommend, you know, getting down with your engineers what needs to be done, following the state guidelines, make sure it's being followed through. And we're here to, to help and assist and, you know, and as they've all stated about the, the residents, you know, it's, some are approved, I mean, for it and some are against it. But I'd like to submit this to you for y'all's review.
Sure. Thank you. At this moment, I would like to see if, ask Leslie Mark to come up and explain the planning committee's position on these issues.
Good evening. I'm Leslie Mark. I live at seven oh seven Chester Avenue and I serve on the Tupelo Planning Committee and have been on there for several years. I'm a habitual volunteer.
Leslie, by the way, I'm going to put five minutes just to be fair.
Okay, that's fine. And I'll just read what I've got here. Regarding the rezoning of application RZ twenty-five dash oh one and major subdivision application MAJ sub twenty-five dash oh one, the Tupelo Planning Committee has carefully reviewed the application submitted by Dr. Max Hutchinson concerning approximately twelve point eight acres located between McCullough Boulevard and Pecan Grove Road. Regarding the rezoning application RZ twenty-five dash oh one, after careful consideration of staff analysis, applicant testimony and public comment, the committee determined that rezoning the subject property from mixed-use commercial corridor to a low-density residential is consistent with the city's adopted plans and compatible with the surrounding land use. The committee recognized that the property's limited access, drainage constraints and adjacency to the existing residential neighborhoods make it unsuitable for commercial development, but appropriate for the residential use. Our position is unanimously approve the rezoning requests, finding that the residential development represents the highest and best use of the property, provided that the drainage and access standards are addressed at the later stage of construction review. Regarding the major subdivision application MJ sub twenty-five dash oh one, following the rezoning approval, the applicant returned with a revised plat request for ten residential lots instead of the original eleven. The fire marshal reviewed and approved the proposed access and subdivision layout. After discussion, the committee unanimously approved the subdivision application, subject to the following conditions. One, green spaces. All six were to be designated green spaces, must be clearly identified on the plat by name and for no other use other than green space. Cluster mailbox would be at the location, must be identified also on the plat. The construction access road must be identified and we required a two-year minimum agreement with the owners. Oh, shoot, sorry. Developer responsibilities. The city, though its agreement with the, through its agreement with the developer, must address the developer's responsibility for the access road and identify who will maintain the designated green space. The cultural review must be also conducted by the Chickasaw Nation. And then, of course, he has to fall into all regulations for MDEQ for large lot residential construction. Development Services has reported that all stipulations have been met. So it's with this, our position is that the committee unanimously approved the subdivisions' application, finding it consistent with subdivision standards and compatible with the surrounding neighborhood.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, so let's move along to, we don't have any citizen hearing at this point. And we're going, nothing on the action agenda. We're going to go to the routine agenda. And if any of you would like to stay, that's fine. If you would like to leave, that's fine too, at this point. All right. In the matter of state-approved holidays for city employees, so I believe this is fairly routine. We're approving Thursday, November twenty-seventh, Friday, the twenty-eighth for Thanksgiving, Christmas, Thursday, December twenty-fifth, Friday, December twenty-sixth, New Year holiday, Thursday, January first and Friday, January second. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? All right, let's move to the next item. In the matter of approval of the city council meeting minutes for October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five, do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of bill pay, we had myself and Nettie and Travis tonight paying the bills. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion, we pay the bill.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Let's see. In the matter of advertising and promotional items, I don't think we have any. Is that still true? In the matter of budget amendment, number one for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Kim, would you like to discuss this with us?
Thank you. This is the first budget amendment for the fiscal year. And since I went over it in detail yesterday, I'll, I'll try to be brief. We're asking to amend the general fund one hundred and fifty-four thousand, one eighty-six. This is basically a housekeeping issue. One item is one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in rollover grant funds that were not spent in two thousand twenty-five that will be spent by the PD in two thousand twenty-six. The other item is eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollar donation received from Tupelo Sports Council that the council has accepted at a prior meeting this fiscal year. So the, you'll see that reflected in the parking rent budget. So that is all in the general fund. The other items include accepting a donation of nine thousand dollars to the CBB fund. That nine thousand dollars will be used for advertising and promotional expenditures. The third fund that we would like to amend is the North Mississippi Narcotics Unit. That would be forty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars that we would like to use of their federal equitable sharing that must be used for PD. They're holding around nine hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in that fund and they would like to spend the amount listed here for tactical gear. It's for rest plates and things, for safety in undercover operations. This would be used by the entire unit, which includes other agencies, not just Tupelo. The last fund will be the capital fund and the biggest portion of those expenditures, you'll see that we're asking to decrease that four million, fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. The bulk of that, four million, one ninety-eight and three dollars is actually just shoring up the actual amount of rollover that we have October one versus what we anticipated at the time that the budget was proposed and adopted. So that is the difference and we're just shoring that up to make those accurate carryovers. The other two items in that fund that we're asking to amend is a one hundred and forty thousand dollar transfer from the Tupelo Public School District that will be used by the SRO officers for equipment as well as a donation that has been previously accepted by the council in the amount of four thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for the Ballard Park for fountains and benches. And that concludes the budget amendment.
All right. Do I have any questions or discussion? All in favor? All right, and then the next thing that you have, Kim, is the matter of closing the two thousand twenty-four Geo Bond bank account. So that's, that's pretty routine, but.
We approve this one.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Any questions about this?
No.
All right, all in favor? In the matter of lot mowing, do I have a motion?
No, so moved.
To approve the list, okay. Second from Rosie. Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of review and approved lot mowing liens, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? This is routine for those of you who haven't been here before. In the matter of review, approved planning committee minutes of September the eighth, two thousand twenty-five, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, in a matter of, okay, wait just a second. Is this where I switch to you? Okay, all right. In the matter of major subdivision application twenty-five dash oh three and preliminary plat approval for Swan Circle Residential Subdivision, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of subdivision application and preliminary plat, I got to go fifteen, sorry about that, y'all. I should have written myself a note. In the matter of review and approval of rezoning application RZ twenty-five dash oh one, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, now I got to go back to fourteen, back to fourteen, right? Okay. In the matter of the major subdivision application and preliminary plat approval for Pecan Grove Phase Three, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All in favor? Oh, you oppose. Okay, we have one opposed. All right, now let's go to, oh, where am I? Okay, I'm lost. We got Pecan Grove. Okay, in the matter of final change order approval, ARPA bid number twenty-two thousand two four oh three seven PW Daniel, Daniel Coe.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay. Kelly, would you like to explain this one?
Yes, ma'am. We request a change order final approval on our Daniel Coe project. This will be a decrease of nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty cents. And as due to us removing the paving from this project, doing it within-house paving, brings the total of that project four hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents.
All right. Kelly, is that project complete?
Yes, ma'am.
Oof, thank you. All right, all in favor? In the matter of final change order approval, Pemberton Avenue Drainage Improvements, bid number two thousand twenty-four oh six six PW. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Yes, on this one, this is a change order final closeout for us only and it's an increase of one thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. This was due to the amount of, the previous change order you approved for us was the damage done to the driveways by the drainage system that was failing. We had to do just a little bit more repair on some of the driveways that run parallel on that. Brought that total project to two hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and forty-three dollars.
Okay, thank you. Are these all done?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Other questions? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, in the matter of CBB board minutes, which I understand are routine for October seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
How moved we would approve the minutes?
Second.
CBB.
Travis, you say second?
I do.
Okay, all in favor? In the matter of approval of Cadence Bank Arena Minutes for September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, these are also routine. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, all in favor? Any discussion or questions? Okay, in the matter of award of bid number two oh two five oh three four WL, it's a two thousand twenty-six cab and chassis four by two. I believe we had approved the purchase prior to this and this was to approve the, the purchase from Waters Truck and Tractor in the amount of ninety-seven thousand, one hundred, which is the lowest bid. Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of approval.
We need to get a motion in a second.
All in favor, we voted without the motion. All right, who wants to do the motion?
I would move to approve the matter of the award, the award.
Thank you. I've got to hurry. All right, now all in favor. You might change your mind. In the matter of approval of change order number two for the Colonial State Lift Station Rehabilitation, bid number two oh two four oh six two WL, and I believe this change order requests additional contract time to, because of delays due in control panel delivery.
Move to approve.
All right, we have a motion in a second. And any questions? All in favor? Now, item twenty-two, proof of publication of the ordinance to enact a water and sewer rate increase approved October seventh, two thousand twenty-five. And I believe this, sorry, yes, a second? Okay, this publication satisfies a requirement of a statute. Is that correct?
Yes, it, we just need to spread it on the minutes, show that we had published that ordinance.
Any other questions? All in favor? Item number, now we move to the study agenda. And on the study agenda, we have, the first, the first thing is in the matter of development code amendment to chapter, to chapter A garage requirement for new single-family dwellings on lots with street furnished fifty feet wide or greater.
Move it up.
All right, we're going to move that one up. And then the next one, in the matter of amendment to City of Tupelo Development Code, Chapter Ten, signs and general provisions and signs other than billboards.
Move it up.
Move it up to X and a D.
Okay, we'll move it up. And then, the matter of an amendment to City of Tupelo Development Code, Chapter Ten, signs, billboards.
Keep it on the study agenda.
In the matter of amendment to City of Tupelo Development Code, various chapters relating to breweries, microbreweries, brew pubs, wineries, native wineries, distilleries and native distilleries.
Keep it on the agenda, keep it on the study agenda.
All right, thank you very much. So now we are going to, does anybody have a motion?
I move that we determine the need for executive session.
Second.
All right.
We had a topic mayor, we're going, we appreciate y'all considering closing the open session for closed session to discuss some matters. Those are not yet ripe to discuss. We'll need just a little bit more study before we bring it to you in the executive session.
So do I have a motion?
I mean, I agree with it.
Yes. A second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you very much.